Tuesday, June 6th, and this is the work session of the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is board discussion, item B1, board discussion on a bond. If you recall at our last meeting, we had a short discussion about the possibility of having a school bond. Do we have the paper?
I have a present.
No, Ms. Raymond, a paper. Do we have a printout paper?
I have a presentation.
Oh, wonderful.
Which includes, yeah.
Oh, yes, sure. Go to this one.
And Dr. Anderson has one.
I have one with Chrissy, and we can give one to Amy, so Amy can follow along. Okay, thank you, everybody. I was asked to do a, hopefully, short presentation for you, so it doesn't take up too much time. And I asked Mr. Pugliese to join me tonight, since he has overseen many of these projects. Give one to Jamon. Thank you. So this is the facilities, projects, and improvements that we have done over the last couple of years. So I thought I'd start with how is a project funded. It can be funded in many different ways. As you know, we do capital inter-fund transfers, which we have done over the last several years. Those monies are then sent to the capital fund, so that we can do the improvements that we have told the taxpayers that we were going to do. Then in the general fund, every year, we do budget money in Mr. Pugliese's budget lines for him to do some improvements and repairs that aren't large. We are going to do the energy performance contract. That is another way to fund a project. And then we have these three, we have two reserves, capital reserve and a repair reserve, and we have a capital fund. And then to fund a project, if it's larger than that, you can do a bond proposition. So the projects that have been completed and/or are in progress at this time are, here are some pictures of the mansion roof and window replacement. You'll see that it's under construction, and it still is under construction, but you'll see here the scaffolding of what the contractor put up. You'll see part of the new roof. And in the bottom middle picture, you'll see where they have started to install some of the windows in the attic. In the main building at the early childhood program, we have removed and replaced some floors. Again, here, you'll see some before pictures, and then the after pictures, once the floor was installed in both of these classrooms. Still at the main building at the early childhood program, we did replace and/or repair some of the sidewalks there, as well as some of the, you'll see the steps. So you'll see before and then the after picture for both of these, of the concrete that was broken, that we felt were hazards, and we had our mason come in and replace these and put these steps in. At the early childhood main building, again, their playground, Mr. Pugliese had the roof canopies replaced, since they were deteriorating. And then at Highview Elementary School, and you'll see in all of the schools that we're showing you, there has been asbestos removal in most of these projects. That happens a lot in most older schools. That way back in the 70s, they did use asbestos. But now, as we do a project, there will be an asbestos abatement. Once that is done, and any work that would be needed in the future on those areas, we would not have to have the asbestos abatement, because it will have already been completed. So part of capital construction phase one was a partial roof replacement at Highview Elementary School. You'll see the first two pictures are the staging area, and then lifting materials onto the roof. And the last picture on the right is the portion of the roof that was replaced. At Highview, part of phase one was also the glazed panels by the gym. If you remember, on the second floor, the windows that looked down into the gym, and on the first floor, those panels needed to be replaced, because they weren't
Fire-rated.
They weren't fire-rated glass units. At the Highview Elementary School, if you looked out where the nurse is, that road right there was in quite disrepair. And for emergency access, Mr. Pugliese had that redone and repaved, so it would be much easier to get up into that back end of the school. At LF Jackson, again, we had asbestos abatement on these hallways. So from where the security booth is, down to Ms. Simone's office, and then to the right and the left, all of that hallway was replaced. There wasn't asbestos abatement. And then, over the summer, this tile was then laid down. The benches at the elementary school, LF Jackson, were deteriorating and/or rotted, so we had those replaced. And in the first picture, you can see in the background, there is a playground. That is the playground that was installed for the ECP children that are housed in a wing at LF Jackson. At RJ Bailey Elementary School, we have been replacing some of the classroom floors. Over time, you'll see here what it looked like before, after the asbestos abatement, the construction in progress, and then the finished product on the right. Currently, right now, at RJ Bailey, since it's after May 15th, and heat can be turned off by SED guidelines, the ventilation work in all of the schools has begun. At RJ Bailey, you will see on both the first two pictures, those dark rectangles is where the contractor has cut into the building for the ventilation work. And on the right is on the inside of the building, where they are hanging the units where the air ventilators will be placed. We had the stairs repaired and/or replaced in different sections at Bailey. The RJ Bailey Auditorium, again, this is part of the funding that we were awarded by former Assemblyman Abenante. We, two summers ago, had the seating removed, and this is what it looks like, waiting for SED approval and going through the process with DASNE, which, as I informed you in my Friday update last week, we have finally made it through DASNE and have gotten approval. So now we are on to the next stages, and we are that much closer to getting the work started at the auditorium. I do know that from Mike Messina from BBS, that it has been submitted to SED. We're waiting for approval and/or any questions from them, so that we can get that approval and then get the products ordered. The gymnasium at RJ Bailey was done over the summer, along with the Woodlands Middle High School. Again, there was asbestos abatement and removal, and then a new floor and the logo were installed. In the future, if any work needs to be done on this gymnasium, there won't need to be any asbestos work or costs, because it will have already been completed. When Mr. Pugliese first started, and he did a walkthrough of all of our buildings, he noticed at Woodlands Middle High School that the small gym exit, in the next pictures, you'll see the theater exit, were crumbling and were in disarray. And he was afraid that people would get hurt in these areas. So he had a contractor come in, and we refurbished and redid these areas for safety. And these are the theater for the Woodlands Middle High School, the side entrance, right?
Yeah.
And this is the work that was completed to repair that. This is the gymnasium for the Woodlands Middle High School, the before and after pictures. And the athletic driveway for the Woodlands Middle High School. As you remember, that was quite a difficult turn for incoming and outgoing traffic. So prior to Mr. Pugliese getting here, we had this done by the previous director of facilities, where he cut out that curb, and it was redesigned, and then we relayed some stone and paved that area, so it would be more of a safety, it was a safety concern, and that there was a better The Morton House, which is also known as the caretaker's house, as you know, that that was demolished about, I would say, well, in September of 2021. These are some pictures of genteel construction taking that house down for us. And then at the transportation building, if you remember, the boilers had gone, so we had those replaced. And then some other projects that are either done or ongoing. The Woodlands Middle High School vestibule, we are getting close to finalizing when that all will come together, and we're hoping right after graduation that will start and continue over the summer. We are stressing, and with our architects, that to convey to the contractor, that we really would like that to be done by the time school starts. So we are really pushing that, so that there is no construction out there that will impede buses and/or dropoff or traffic. The RJ Bailey Elementary School playground was completed, and on the right is a picture of that under construction. Highview Elementary School got a new playground. Again, the early childhood program at LF Jackson got a new playground for the, for those students. We have done many boiler repairs. And at RJ Bailey, Mr. Falcone, the previous director of facilities, had some exterior masonry work done on the lintels on the outside of the building. We are still in the midst of capital construction phase one. We are working on the ventilation. Like I said, now that it's after May 15th. And the energy performance contract, which is at SED for approval, was approved by the voters on January 17th of 2023. So if you look at the projects from the capital inter-fund transfers and our legislature grants, in 2223, we told the taxpayers that we were going to use the funds for the Woodlands Middle High School gymnasium, which has been completed, the RJ Bailey gymnasium, which has been completed, and the Woodlands Middle High School fire hydrants and water line, which is in the process of, the design is finished and the review, is that SED?
Ongoing, yes.
Is ongoing, okay. For the 2324 school year, we asked the taxpayers, or told them that we would use the capital inter-fund transfer to replace the auditorium roof at RJ Bailey, so that once the new auditorium is installed, that any rain damage wouldn't get inside the building, the Highview third grade window walls, and we will do some bathroom repairs. The DASNE grants, the RJ Bailey Auditorium interior will be funded by the grant from a former Assemblyman Abenante. And part of the Woodlands Middle High School track will be funded from Senator Stuart Cousins, the grant that she gave Greenberg Central Schools. So I have two scenarios here for you. The first is if you considered the roof, the track, and the tennis courts. That would cost approximately $13,125,000. I show you how it could be funded, monies that could be used from the capital reserve, a transfer from the repair reserve, and then what available funds there would be to offset a project, and then the rest could be bonded. I gave you the three scenarios that I did the last time. One, if you completely bonded the whole project. The second scenario, if you applied $2 million. And the third scenario, if you applied $3.5 million, which was the recommendation at the last board meeting. And I show you what the estimated total principal and interest for 15 years at 4.5% would be, and then what the tax impact just on this project would be if you used all of the information that we used during the 2324 budget. Again, I have to stress that these are estimated numbers, because we don't know where interest rates will be, and we don't know exactly how much we would need to bond, if any. And then the last scenario is exactly the same as the first with the numbers, except this is if you just did the roofs. And what that would cost, and if you applied $2 million or $3.5 million, and then what would have to be bonded, and what the tax impact would be. Are there any questions?
Okay. Very good. Good job with the pictures. Really brings together all the stuff that you've been doing since you got here, Mr. Pugliese. It's really, I'm really happy about that. Now, in regards to the phase two decision as to whether to include the track and tennis courts in the project or outside of the project, it was a real thing that, you know, on one hand, I want to get it done, and on the other hand, I want the bond to be low enough to where it has the chance to pass. So if my desire is to take care of those other two projects, if I could do it without having them inter-bond and still get it done, I prefer that. Now, we had this $1.6 million that we talked about at the end of, at the end of our discussion last time. And that $1.6 million was, we had the American Rescue Plan funding that came in for ventilation, and we could substitute in for some funding that we had in, I think, the 2020, 2021 school year, that we were using for ventilation water. So that's we have $1.6 million. And if I go back to the roof and tennis court, if you back up one slide.
Ooh, maybe?
We have a slide that had the roof and tennis court at the top.
What do I do, Luke?
I believe it had that amount of less than $1.6 million. Am I correct?
Correct. So as I was asked after President Biden gave his speech, and I spoke with our representatives from the state, the money that every school in New York State was awarded through the American Rescue Plan is considered obligated funds. Anything that is obligated will not be taken away. Any state that hasn't handed out any money, and it's considered unobligated, has the risk that the federal government will take that away. So I asked again, does that mean, since Greenberg was given this many millions dollars, he said, yes, that money is there for you to use. So it is my thought that, I want to get to the second to last page. My thought was that the ventilation work that is currently being done now, so let's just say, sorry, Bailey, let's use that $1.6 million now, so that we spend it, so that we can get that money. Then the $1.6 that is available from phase one, let's take that, or it's my recommendation, that you take some of that money and put it towards the track, the rest of the track, and the tennis courts.
Okay, so $6.75 plus last one, I see, so the eight lane
Yes.
of the track.
Correct.
Is the $1.2 million.
Correct.
So you subtracted, yeah, subtracted out, whatever, before you died. Okay, good, good. All right, so that will work. So I would tend to agree with mine. Now, let me ask you. We have to inform people if we're going to redecorate this 2020, 2021 line.
Correct, so, yes.
Something in October, what would that
So Chrissy and I have been working on, and I've had Chrissy working with Westchester County. It looks like we could do a vote on October 17th, which is a Tuesday. And at that time, you would have the proposition to float a bond, and then I would ask for a second proposition, that this $1.6 that is now just sitting in the capital fund, let us use $1.275 million, or $1.2 million. Let's, let us repurpose that to finish the track and do the tennis courts. It'd be two propositions.
Okay, that works for me. Okay, so other people have questions besides me?
I have a comment, first and foremost, thank you, Trustee Warner, and Mr. Pugliese.
Yes.
So I just want you to know, I have really, really good things about you, and that you really care about our district, and you're really trying to make sure that we can do everything we need to do for our students. But I probably say that in the heat of that, and the RJ Bailey Auditorium looks glorious to what it used to look like even at this day. So I'm really happy. Thank you, Trustee Warner, and everyone around here who's been looking on that.
I just have to say, it would be much cheaper if we just got everybody a big pillow to sit on.
Listen, let's get it ready. We don't have to be traditional, but let's get it ready. But I would like to say, in reference to the bond, I think we talked about it a lot last time. I do not think this is the same bond that was before. So I know people get a little nervous about adding, but we need to, we need to do the track. We need to do the tennis courts. We don't need, I mean, if it's $1.6 million, fine, but we need that done. And I think the community needs to know what the students need. And we need to go forward. And we just got to move forward. It's been too long that our buildings have been decrepit and not up to par. Too long, too many years.
So if you
So we move on. Let's just do it.
Yep. So if you, if we use part of that $1.6 million, and this is the sheet, you would just have to decide on how much from the capital reserve you would like to ask the taxpayers to allow us to use against a roof bond project.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was a good presentation. And I just want to second, for Trustee Washington, Senator Pugliese, I've also heard great things. So thank you for your commitment to the issue. The only thing I wanted to ask, Ms. Raymond, is something I read in a report, and I do have printed here, but I'll just paraphrase a recommendation to hire a construction manager.
Yes. So most times when you do a larger construction project, you hire a construction manager who works for the district that keeps track of and coordinates all the projects. They would be, they would work for us daily, not necessarily be here on site, but that would alleviate what Mr. Pugliese is currently doing. He is doing his director of facilities role, and he's running around checking on the contractors. Because we still are in phase one, and if we have other projects that will be going on, it is the recommendation of our architects that we get a construction manager, that they can be right on top of all of this. And I've spoken with Mr. Pugliese, that as we do these bigger things, it's going to take somebody a lot more time than what he has. It would be worth our while to hire a construction manager, which would happen by us going out for RFP.
Because I read that the architects are, so it's not like they're working, paying you.
No, no, no.
Oh, so to me, I didn't know that.
In general.
It's just, and it's also, yeah, also known as like a clerk of the work. Somebody that will keep track of everything that's going on in every building.
And it's like a contractor?
Correct. Yes, yes, yep.
Okay, any other questions?
Just a quick technical question. We were talking about the reserve lines. The, the timing of phase one, 1.6, is now going to be paid via the American Rescue Plan.
Correct.
Which will not be clawed back.
Correct.
Do we have to pay that out and then get reimbursement from the government? Is there a timing issue as far as when, if we're going to allocate that funds to
As long as that money is earmarked by the 2024 school year, then we're okay.
But we pay it out, and then we
We pay it out, and then we, so what'll happen is, is once that work is done, and as we pay contractors, Amy will then file the paperwork with the federal government to get, with New York State, because it's flowing through New York State to get, it's kind of just like a federal, just like a grant.
Gotcha. So I'm just trying to game this, because David, I think, was suggesting that we use those funds for the other projects instead of building into the bond, but we would have to wait. We can't
Okay.
Make it one with the same amount of money, with the same amount of money.
But you have to remember, too, just because, we, let's say we ask the taxpayers in October if we can use this 1.6 for these other two projects. By the time they say yes, by the time the design is done, by the time, that takes time, by the time it gets submitted to SED, you know there's at least a 12-plus week wait there. So it just might fall into line where, if, you know what I mean? It's all going to be timing, yes.
Because the latest we, sorry, you just said this, I know, but
2024, September 2020.
The latest we submit for reimbursement, and then ideally, it's back to us by, let's just pretend, December 2024.
There's usually, like, about a month, month turnaround.
So in that scenario, we may wait, okay. That's all for now.
I think we would be fine, because again, if we take, say, the ventilation that we're doing at Bailey, and submit that through American Rescue Plan, once it's done, once we pay for it, and we get that reimbursement, then you know the 1.6 is there.
Any other questions specifically about
Sure. Okay, so now I'm down to, I want to be on the, because I'm going to have two separate propositions. I want to be on the page where I'm choosing between scenarios one, two, and three, on, on the roof project, roof only, right? Because if we're looking at one of the propositions, because that's the one that actually will pull more money out of taxpayers' pockets. So it's whether we do scenario one, which is 11.9 million, scenario two, 9.95 million, or scenario three, 8.45 million. The more money we take out of our reserves, the lower the total. I'm thinking that I like the cheapest scenario. I like the 8.8450,000. What do other people think?
So remember, if you did the third scenario, the 3.5 million, which was what was suggested last time to run the numbers, that would still leave one, 2.1 million available.
Correct, and the reserve, which
In the reserves, correct.
And I can, I can start pushing for science labs and all the other stuff down the line after that. Very good. So I think, I think I'm good. I'm looking for scenario three, the cheapest one from the taxpayers' position. I don't know what other people think.
There would be less, very much less, if there is.
No, well, right. So in total, the capital reserve, if we transferred 3.5 million to the capital reserve, and you use 3.5 million, that would leave 1.4 left in the capital reserve, but that would reduce the repair reserve to just a little more than 750,000. If I remember from the last board meeting, you weren't comfortable with having 500,000 in that reserve. You wanted a little more. So, and remember that the repair reserve can only be used for repairs. And again, I know that, that we do have repairs, and the way that money can come out is by your resolution, once we maybe come up with something that would be a repair. But most things that we are doing do not qualify as a repair right now.
Ms. Raymond, you bring up other sheet, like you were considering the tennis court and the track, right?
Well, the tennis courts and the track, we were going to use the 1.6 that is freed up for.
Separate proposition, no cost to taxpayer.
Or you could, if I, if I can do it without screwing up, ha, there you go.
So, Trustee Warner, are you asking, or people telling, on the other page or on this page?
So I was So I was talking about the bond, right? So we'll end up with two propositions, but only one bond, right? So the, so one proposition will be the 11 million, 950,000, and the cost of the taxpayers on the other slide. Then the other proposition is gonna be track additional cost and tennis courts. Those two things, that's 675 plus 500,000, and that's gonna come out at 1.6 million.
So we're, we're, so you are in agreement with the roof, back and tennis court?
As a separate proposition. Okay, so let's go to the other, let's go to the other page and look at Scenario number 2. So there, Scenario number 2 on this page, which is 9 million, 950,000 dollar bond amount. It is under 10 million. Alright, so you prefer Scenario 2. Things have shifted, okay.
I'm leaning towards Scenario 2 also. I have one question regarding, again, the reimbursement by state. So is it, just as a question of cash flow, as we pay contractors, we can be reimbursed? We don't have to have an entire project completed to be reimbursed? Okay, so it's multiple requests for reimbursement?
Correct, so all of these projects that we have going on are going to be a timing issue, because you have to remember also, the vestibule money is Smart Schools Investment Plan. We have to pay for that before we receive the money. That was part of the stipulations of Smart Schools. So once that starts, we have, we will pay that 450-something thousand dollars, and then we will get reimbursed from the state, once we prove that we've paid it.
So given the number of projects we have, do you have any concerns regarding cash flow? If we have multiple projects occurring at the same time?
I always have concerns about cash flow. Amy and I are always running, you know, cash flows and, you know, cause we have to time our payroll, et cetera, health insurance, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, that doesn't come out of these same funds. But as long as everything is strategically planned, yes, and staggered, we, we should be fine. And filed timely, which Amy is very good at doing.
I'm leaning to Scenario 2.
Alright, so let me be the lone dissenter here. I agree with everyone's sentiment, but I don't like risk. And I feel there is some risk here with funding and timing and all that other stuff that happens. So I would be the lone dissenter to go for the other option, which is roof, track, and tennis court from the beginning. And when we get the 1.6 reimbursement, we can use that for other projects, cause we have a myriad that are in the pipeline anyways. And I would do Scenario for that one. I would go with Scenario 3 to keep us under the 10 million, but that's just me.
It's right there. It's, it's the second to last page of the presentation I gave you. And, and that, that is fine. Just remember that that 1.6 that we're gonna free up will sit in the Capital Fund until you decide what you wanna use it for, because you have to ask the taxpayers. But, but that's fine, that, it just can't be used, you know, willy-nilly.
You guys need me to clarify what I said? I can, alright, so let me, I'll say it again, no problem. So what I said is, I don't wanna run the risk of timing, right? We know we'll get the 1.6, but what we don't know is when we'll get the 1.6, and if SED will approve, and timelines, and we see what happens with paperwork when it goes up there, right? It's, it's a, it's a mixed bag, to put it lightly. So my point is, being more conservative on that, on that front, I would say, let's go with this project, Phase 2, roof, track, and tennis courts. And looking at column number 3, Scenario 3, where we're transferring 3.5 from the Capital, from the repair reserve to the Capital Reserve, then we're using that 3.5 there to give Scenario 3, so we end up with a 9.625 bonded amount. That's what I'm saying. And then when the 1.6 finally does come, sometime next year, you take the 1.6, it's gonna be in the Capital Reserve Fund, and at that point, you go back to the voters and say, okay, we wanna use this fund for XYZ, et cetera. That's what I'm saying.
Right, that's what we talked about. Alright, that's why I've been a little confused. So, we're talking about Phase 2, roof, track, tennis courts, but we're also talking about 10 million.
Correct.
So what do we have to do now? What's the next step? Do we need to vote again? So is there any more questions? Okay, thank you.
The worst effect on me than other people, like, after, it hurt my bones.
Like the scum and nails on the chalkboard?
Some, but, it, it happened a couple, I was at a conference this past weekend, and it happened a couple times. I was like, no, I wanted to thank you. Oh my god.
Luke, is everything okay?
Everything's good.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Should we, we can continue, we're back?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're good, you're good.
Thank you, thank you so much, that was a wonderful presentation, Ms. Raymond. So now, you need the board to make some decisions. Do we have any more questions, trustees, or does everyone, is everyone ready to kinda pick their scenario and make a decision? We heard a couple of opinions, we heard, there's two issues on the floor with whether or not to use the 1.6 million now, or not. That's, I think, the biggest thing, because that's gonna tell us which page we're going from. So my question is, do we need to make a motion, or do, what's the next step? So we, we're gonna, we're gonna go around each person and say whether or not we wanna use the 1.6 now, or wait. And then we'll know which sheet we're coming from, and then we're gonna want Scenario 1, 2, or 3 on either sheet, and then we would make a motion. Depending on which one we have. Okay, so, Trustee Warner, you want the 1.6?
I want to use the 1.6, and I like Scenario 3.
So you wanna use it now, okay. Trustee Allen?
Use it now.
Okay, Trustee Washington?
I'm gonna go with Trustee Pineda on number 3.
Trustee Pineda?
What Trustee Washington just said, thank you.
Trustee Valen, now or later?
I'm not quite clear what you mean by use it now. I want to include the three projects and the bond issue. Ashley has concisely identified my concerns.
Hold up, I don't know what she said.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard, mics are all so-
Hold on a sec.
Yeah.
Trustee Pineda, and Trustee Washington.
Later, okay, and Trustee Thomas, now or later? That's a candy, when I was growing up.
This is whether we're going to use the 1.6 now or, or later. If we do use it now, the, help me with the, what the repercussion is, I, I was looking at it, but I-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, Ms. Raymond, do you wanna explain the difference in both sheets, I would say? Using the 1.6 now, and then getting it back later, or holding on to it? Go ahead, Trustee Ray, do you wanna explain it, or you want Trust, Ms. Raymond to explain it?
Trust, I'm sure Ms. Raymond will explain better, but I'm just suggesting that we rephrase it. Instead of use it now, use it later, what's included in the bond? And what is not included in the bond?
Okay, say it the way that you want to say it.
I think Ms. Raymond should take over at this point.
Okay, do you want the bond to include the track, the rest of the track, the tennis courts, and the roofs? And apply some money from Capital Reserve to that? Set aside the 1, that would mean you set aside the 1.6, once we get that return, for a different project. That's exactly what Trustee Pineda had said, he didn't wanna use the 1.6 now.
Cause I see now or later, I see either we apply the 1.6 to it, thank you.
Alright, so I will restate what I said before. So what we're talking about right now, either way we're doing this, we're doing the tennis and the track. Any way you're slicing this, the question is, are we putting that in the bond now from the start, right? And we're going to the voters and ask them to approve that amount? Or are we saying we're just doing the roofs with the bond, and then we're going to put a separate proposition to the voters and ask them if we can use 1.6 million dollars, which we will be reimbursed for in the future? We don't know the timing on that, sometime in 2024, to do those two projects. My point was, I don't wanna wait on relying on government funding to come in and paperwork and approvals and all that to start that project, cause we don't know how long that will take. So my pro and con was, let's put the roof, track, and tennis courts together as a single bond now, and when the 1.6 million comes to us next year, whenever that happens, you take that 1.6 million, at that point in time, it's gonna go into the Capital Reserve Fund, and then we decide, or you guys would decide at that point, what projects you wanna use that 1.6 million towards. And in the future, you go to the voters and say, hey, we wanna use this 1.6 million from the Capital Reserve for Project ABC. So that's the two decision points right now. Either way, we're doing all three. The question is, do you wanna put it in the bond now? Or do you wanna just do the roofs in the bond, and then, and put a second proposition to use the 1.6 once it's available next year?
And then the last point of clarity is, it, it sounds like the projects associated with the tennis court and the track can still be done at the same time, because it's all bonded now. The, the, the later is more about having more money available in case of some type of challenge between, like, whatever.
I, I would say it's more about the completion of the projects, cause right now we have partial funding for them.
Got it, okay.
So, I'm sorry, do you wanna, now or later?
Bond, do it in the bond now.
Do it all now, so that would be later. And, Ms. Raymond, you guys recommended the two proposition place, and why, what was your concern about doing it?
If you wanted to use the 1.6 to do the tennis courts and the track, you'd have to ask the taxpayers, because that money was originally asked to be used for Phase 1. And that's what they agreed to. So we would have to tell them that this was leftover, and here's how we wanna use it now.
So either way, is it two proposition?
No, if you do what you wanna do, it would just be-
The two proposition one, why did you recommend that one?
Just, it's not so much that we recommended it as much as telling you that's how it would have to be done if you use it that way.
Understandable, okay, so it looks like trustees are at the one proposition place. Now, that puts us on page 27, guys, and there's Scenario 1, 2, and- I don't know what's going on, technology, but, am I hitting this the wrong way?
No, no, you're good, sorry.
Okay, so, page 27, 1, 2, or 3. And now we'll go around again, Trustee Warner?
3.
Okay, Trustee Allen?
3.
Okay, Trustee Washington?
3. I'm gonna say 3, what's happening?
Trustee Pineda said 3, so it sounds pretty unique. Trustee Valen and Thomas? You're gonna throw a wrinkle? You were gonna say what?
Cause I was gonna say 2, but it-
Me too.
And I had suggested last meeting that we split the difference and do 3 million from the reserves instead of 3.5.
That would give you an 11 million dollar bond instead of a 9.6 million.
A 3 million gives you 11 million dollar bond? What if we do, hold on, what's the difference between 9.65 and 10? Leave that difference in, if you just do 10 million flat for the bond, and leave that difference in the repair reserve.
So Trustee Valen, you're suggesting like a 2.5?
Impact would come between 2 and 3.
Right, to, to make the actual bonded amount 10 million even.
Do you want to increase it to have another digit to make it less likely to pass?
Uh, that's an excellent point. I'm concerned about the amount we leave in the repair reserve, but I'm not firm on my decision, I'm just-
Okay.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter, because it's four people, who want Scenario 3, so we're going with that. And we will move forward, so you got, you got that, Ms. Raymond, Scenario 3, with one proposition. Now, is there a motion? Do we need proper wording?
So let, let me ask you, what I thought we were doing was that we were going to have a written motion, which would be drafted based upon our polling in this discussion, and that would happen at the next meeting. Is that your understanding?
Get a motion, you'll talk with Carol, and write it up, and then next meeting you'll-
You got it.
Address it, yes, Trustee Valen?
So before we move on from this discussion, you, you guys have identified October 17th, that's good with all the election officials, that's a Tuesday. And our 45-day walk back for having things approved and publicized, will we have a meeting in time? And when do we, we need to schedule that?
Chrissy, can, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the end of August, right? The latest, end of August.
So we'd need to ensure we had a meeting sometime in August to kick the ball rolling for official things?
Would, and I, I would defer to Carol, would we have to have a meeting in August? Or if they had, could we, could they do it at the reord meeting? It has to be done at least 45 days before, so we could do it earlier at the reord meeting.
Okay, so everything that needs to get done, we can get done by July?
Yep.
Additionally, we usually have a facilities walkthrough sometime in August, that, that most, usually at least four people can attend. If something needs to be-
I was just, we'd need to know that drop dead date, though, so to make sure it was-
I agree, yeah, so does anyone know the actual date, 45 days before?
I believe it's August 28?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, any more on this discussion? We're gonna move on to policy review. We actually have quite a bit of business here, and I see we do have public commenters, as well as a invitee from our superintendent into executive session. Would the board like to continue on that agenda, or skip to public comments, executive session, and then come back out to take care of the rest of the business? What's your pleasure?
I move that we go to public comments.
Okay, does anyone, okay, wonderful, so let's-
Aye.
Okay, we, I don't, do we need a motion? No, do, oh, you're right, you moved in second, it's properly moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, we're gonna jump to public comments, which is item C6. And Christine, how many public commenters do we have? Okay. Okay. Okay, um, here we have Karina Gabriel. And the topic is change in graduation time. Ms. Gabriel, you have four minutes.
Oh, did I shut it? Hello? Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Karina Gabriel and I'm a parent of a high school senior as well as a middle schooler. Parents were informed yesterday, June 5th, that there has been a change in time for our high school graduation. The time has been set on the school calendar for the past 10 months at 5:00 PM on June 23rd. Supposedly in collaboration with parents. The time was changed to 3:00 PM. This notification came less than three weeks prior to this major school event. How is this possible? Communication in this district has not improved at all in the past two years. Sending out newsletters is not enough. I was told by several parents via social media that they heard about this time change weeks ago. I'm not sure how, but they heard about it. I was also informed that there was a blurb in the May 25th newsletter. That being said? The letter was sent out to families dated May 31st? Yet it was received on June 5th? Can you please explain why there was a 10 day delay in notification to parents from the date of the newsletter to the date the email was sent out? More importantly, can you explain the reason for the change in time? And which parents collaborated with you for this change? As a working class parent, I can tell you, I'm livid with the time change and the complete disregard that this district shows us. There was no collaboration with parents. There was no poll sent out to families. Why was there no poll sent out to families of seniors? A few parents with great influence had their voices heard. Did you even consider the fact that people have family members traveling from afar to attend this rite of passage for our students? Did you consider our seniors? Who thought they had the day to prepare themselves, maybe get a fresh cut, get their makeup done, all of that stuff? Most importantly, did you consider working parents like me who now have to call out of work? And miss a day's pay? Many of you might have flexible schedules, but I have a city job. And I don't get paid if I'm not there. I also can't get off whenever I feel like it on short notice. This change was not only completely unnecessary, it was completely inconsiderate. And many parents are upset who couldn't be here tonight, and I'm speaking for all of them. Something has to be done about the awful lack of communication in this district and quite frankly, the terrible decision making in the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Next, we have Jessica Muldoon. You have four minutes, Ms. Muldoon.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Um, I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to trustee Pineda for your service. Um, I greatly missed seeing you on the, uh, facilities and finance committee, but hopefully you'll be there on our side um, going forward, cause you, we need your knowledge. Um, but I enjoy not being in a meeting every night. Um, I'm reaching out tonight about the after school programs proposed for next year? Um, and sharing the amount of confusion that exists based on the communication we have and have not received. The first is the United Way program at Highview. Um, I got a notice today for an orientation that's happening on Saturday. Luckily, I received something because I signed up months ago from the program directly, but a lot of parents had not. So it's four or five days' notice for a program happening on Saturday. It's also not clear who's eligible for this program? Highview students, all Highview students? I've also heard K through six. We need clarity on who can be invited to this program and if there's any cost involved. The second is the Healthy Minds program, which we got information about last week. There was a writ, initial mention of it in April and I think potentially a few months ago. I'm very concerned with the cost of this. The price is what I would pay for one to one babysitting, not what I would pay for a group program. Um, and I think you're gonna see that parents really can't afford to have this service. Especially the drop in $60 for two hours of care. I can get a very experienced babysitter for less. Um, so I think if there's any way to look at those costs, you definitely need to reconsider it. The other mention was that this orientation would be remote over the summer. If I'm potentially paying $600 a month in a program, I want an in-person orientation. I want my children to experience it. I want to get their feedback. So please, if you can talk to the vendor about an in-person opportunity, that would be great. The other is, is this program definitively going to go forward? Can I count on this in September? For my children? If not, again, as a working parent who does not have any flexibility to get home? What else am I gonna do? So we need to know, we were told in orig- originally February we would start? Then April, then May, hey, let's try it for June? How do I know this is really gonna start in September? So we need answers, we need clarity. To get information about one program this week, another program next week? We need it all together. Even a simple chart, this is the program, this is who's eligible, this is the cost, these are the days and times. Just make it very, very clear and concise. There is a lot of confusion and it's gonna end up, no one's gonna take advantage of it. My last, uh, comment is, as a reminder to everyone, PTA needs you. You can re-enroll for your PTA membership for next year. Um, parents, community members, everyone, we need you involved, we need your voice. We need your membership, we'll take your time if you have it. Um, PTA membership does not roll over year over year, so please make sure you rejoin. As a parent, I've really found it valuable to always join the PTA from the next school up. Um, so you start to see what that school does, even if you don't do a lot, you get their newsletters. Um, so we really encourage you, everyone, and we appreciate all the board members who've joined the PTA. Um, but we hope all parents and community members sign up for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muldoon. Um, are there any comments, questions, concerns by board members for admin at all?
Well, I do have a question, um, in reference to the change of time. Um, because the letter did state that it was in collaboration with parents? And I know that I'm a parent and I didn't collaborate, so I just don't understand um, how the time change did happen? So if administration can just have a comment or speak to me in reference to it, because.
Get back to you?
You'll follow up and get back on why the time change happened?
Yes, I think I sent some information home in the weekly packet this past Friday. Uh, but I will follow up and, and, uh, your specific question, but I thought I addressed it in my packet on Friday.
Okay.
Can I, can I just maybe, um? Can I just maybe piggyback with trustee Washington as far as, um, if it's possible to send, um, maybe a larger communication explaining to everyone, not just the board? Because it sounds like there's some people in the public that don't understand, the board just learned about this as well. Um, so, you know, yes, we get the packet of question, you know, we get our questions answered, which is excellent, but, um, the public may not get those answers, so maybe something like a, um, larger blast? That can, um, clarify, um, because it's not just senior parents, there are kids in other grades that may want to attend. Sometimes the community attends.
It's just, it was.
Yeah.
It's a different move. This hasn't happened the month of June. You know, for a time change such as big as the high school graduation. So it was surprising. You know, there were a lot of phone calls, a lot of questions? And just wonderings around the whole thought process around that? And the consideration to all parents, because I'm going to speak for myself. Um, I wasn't planning on taking the day off. But I can, and I am going to, but that wasn't my original plan. So I, I think we just need to, you know, hear our parents. We want them as partners. So we need to really respect and consider their voices? And making sure that we're understanding that we are working together for the betterment of all? Not just some, but all students.
Okay, no more questions, comments, concerns? Um, the second thing I was gonna ask admin, um, with regard to Ms. Muldoon's comments about, um, the United Way program? I'm wondering if that can also be a larger blast? I know that you did, uh, Dr. Iverson, the superintendent, did a weekly blast, but it was kind of, I guess, embedded in several other messaging? So if there could be maybe a specific, um, blast that, I, I like the, the idea of the chart? But also, um, what's available per level? Because I, the United Way is only for Highview? That program? Oh, Dr. Mike Luso, sorry. Um, the United Way is only for Highview age, so I guess that could be confusing too if parents don't have.
I don't have the particulars with me today. I know we had kind of surfaced the design of that program in February, so I can revisit it and then maybe it can be included in Dr. Iverson's correspondence that'll go out.
It will certainly collaborate and get a chart that includes all of this information?
And then lastly, with healthy kids, I heard her ask about the definitive childcare and that is very important. If, what if there is low enrollment because of the high cost? Cause I did hear parent, I did hear grumblings as well that the cost, if you did before and after school is, is similar to like, uh, nursery school cost, which every parent is thankful when their kid doesn't have to have nursery school, uh, tuition. So if there is low enrollment because people can't afford it or people don't take advantage of it? Does it still run? With, so it doesn't run then?
Right. It depends on the numbers. If we don't get the enrollment, it's, you know, we won't run a program. Uh, it depends on, and I, I'll have to go back and read the contract specifically, so I don't want to.
Okay, yeah, no, no.
I'm sure there's language on a certain number of students.
Okay.
Uh, so we, I can check on that, but, uh, uh, but, um, if we don't have the students, it wouldn't run.
Right.
And that was something when we met and partnered with them, they, they are clear on that. It can, it's only a program if we have students.
So that definitely, I think, is an important piece for parents, because if they're banking on that early morning or late afternoon childcare and then in August or something, you find out it's not happening, that's kind of like too late, especially with little kids who need, um, coverage. Uh, trustee Valen, I saw you moving.
Well, can I speak to that? Because there is a flyer that, I don't know if I sent it out Friday? Last Friday will come out now, there is right now open registration, so we can get those numbers. Uh, so it's before and after school, uh, coming this fall is, oh, registration is open now, the flyer that's going out. Uh, I will check to make sure with my secretary whether I did it Friday, as I said. And there are gonna be three, I did, okay, thank you for reminding me. And there are gonna be three virtual open houses, uh, one July 18th, um, uh, not three, there are several, uh, July 18th, uh, August 15th, August 22nd, August 29th, August, September 7th, September 12th. So many opportunities, uh, for parents to, uh, find out more information about the before and after school program, but and I'm sure I'll be come, certainly, uh, working with them and meeting with them throughout the summer? Monitoring the numbers, uh, the numbers will dictate whether we have the program at all, so the registration is open now to just try to get a feel for that.
Trustee Valen, so you moved.
Yeah, yes. Um, so, thank you for mentioning the, the open house. Uh, the virtual open house dates and just regarding the numbers and if it doesn't run? There's really no due date mentioned in here, and if they're having open houses, it's late at September 12th? And to the concern Ms. Muldoon mentioned? Parents need to have a Plan B available or have it booked now, they kind of already have to be making their arrangements. So if there's no, you know, sign up by X date.
A cutoff date.
That rolling enrollment could create a problem for everyone, so just, it's something maybe to follow up with them.
Okay, good point.
Did you, no? Yes, no? No? Okay, any other questions, comments? No? Okay. Trustee Warner, you look like you want to say something, no? I'm just reading, I'm, okay.
I'm doing.
All right, so next we have executive session and then we'll come back and do all the business? Is there a motion for executive session?
I move that way into executive session.
To discuss?
Collective bargaining negotiations, employment history of particular persons, personal matters and or employee records? And matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice or counsel. Yes? Yes, Jamal?
Yes.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, it's 7:42, we're going into executive session. I suspect we'll be there for quite a while and then we'll come out and do our, the rest of our board work. Thank you.
Mr. Messina, come on.
Tonight, policy number 5681. Policy number, I'm gonna, sorry, read the name of the policy as well. Thank you, Christine. Yeah, school safety plans. Policy 7530, child abuse and maltreatment. Policy 7131, education of students in temporary housing. Policy 7550, dignity for all students act? And policy 7554, student gender identity. So the board will be reviewing these policies unless someone has a comment tonight? And the policies will be for public availability for up to 30 days? And the board will be looking at adopting these policies. Which meeting? Trustee Valen, remind me, please? July 11th? July 11th meeting, okay. So, anyone interested in those policies, please take a look and can email the board or contact our clerk? With any of your comments, questions or concerns. Any trustees have any feedback about the policies?
Sure. Oh, and so does Chris. Let's let Chris go first, she'll have more.
She wants you to go first, trustee Warner.
Okay, so my first comment is on policy 7131. Page 5 of 15, I just have a, a question on language. So we have a, a point in item K, it says, uh, we're looking at, at a list of, uh,
David.
McKinney-Vento-Lizen must ensure that.
What do you?
Policy 7131?
Page 5 of 15, he said.
Five out of 15.
And then what?
And then I was looking at item K.
K, okay.
And I'm describing that this is a list, right, and the stem sentence for the list is district McKinney-Vento-Lizen must ensure that. And then on item K? Person, school personnel providing services to students in temporary housing receive professional learning and other support, and they crossed out development. Is professional development no longer current term? It is current, right? So who crossed out?
That is just the, um, policy I'll put in when we, because we start, uh, the part that's submitted from the OCS partnership we have and this is how they sent it back with that update.
Okay, so I don't think we need this change.
I mean, they, they checked, that's the word they had in the update of this policy when he sent it back.
All right, it won't kill me if it says it's professional learning instead of development, I was just wondering if there was some reason? Okay, fine.
Okay.
Okay, fine, so then I don't have anything else on 7131. Does anybody else have anything before 7550?
7550, 7550 policy is dignity for all students act, what page?
Uh, so page 3 of 6, same comment, development versus learning, and then on page 4 of 6? Dignity for all students act, page 4 of 6, the, uh, the, the red paragraph? Um, this, that lists a number of policies. Uh, it, it includes policy 3421, Title IX and sex discrimination. That doesn't appear to be in the policy manual. At least not in our active policy manual. I don't know if you've got it in the list that we're gonna include it later, but it's not there now.
We're gonna have our governance and policy chair, it looks like she's looking through the queue probably? Um, to see if it's something that's coming up.
So, policy 3420, non-discrimination, anti-harassment in the, had the word school, school district? And then policy 3421, Title IX and sex discrimination, we don't have one.
Did you add that, um, Christine, that he's saying the word school should be there? 3420. Thirty-four, twenty should be synonymous with our policy thirty-four, twenty. It should say the same, that's what you're saying, right?
Right.
The same language?
So, you're on page four of six of policy seventy-five, fifty. You're looking at a paragraph that's all in red text, meaning it's all new stuff. And it says, policy thirty-four, twenty, non-discrimination and anti-harassment in the, it should be school.
School district.
And then policy thirty-four, twenty-one.
We don't even have.
We don't have it in our policy manual. So, you're probably gonna take that out. You do? Okay. Now we have.
Do you wanna update us, Trustee Valen?
There, there's a new policy, David, so that policy will actually be added.
It will be there in the future, so in some future month.
Yes, yes.
We have a queue.
You wanna add it before it exists?
I'm hoping it will exist very soon, because it's, it's near the top of our queue.
Okay. So, then, um, seventy-five, fifty, page five of six. So, there was a section on reporting to the Board of Education, and, uh, and it's being removed. Right, so you're, you have, you have reporting of incidents to the superintendent, reporting of material incidents to Commissioner of Education, and then there's a section on reporting to the Board of Education. It seems to be, have been stuck under prohibition of retaliatory behavior, whistleblower stuff. It didn't make any sense for it to, to be there, but, you know, shouldn't there still be a section on reporting to the Board of Education?
The Board, yeah, needs to be reported to.
Right.
Is it repeated?
Yeah, it should be moved up.
Is that, was it a repeat?
It's already listed above, underneath reporting incidents.
It got moved up maybe to reporting incidents. It's the same language, yeah.
Where, uh, what, what section is it under?
Same page, uh, top of page five.
Two paragraphs up.
Yeah, it says reporting incidents to the superintendent, and then it mentions the whole thing about the superintendent. That's what you're talking about?
And or discrimination to the superintendent. It's reported to the superintendent in a manner pursuant to the district.
It's the building principal reports to the superintendent.
Oh, okay.
Right, but it's not going to the, it's not going to the board. So, it should go to the board, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So, that should be in, so that's, that's real. Okay, and, uh, so that's, that's that for that policy. Anybody else have anything before policy seventy-five?
Do you have another, keep going, David.
No, no, I had, had one point on what Trustee Warner said about the policy that doesn't exist yet, thirty-four, twenty-one.
That's it, I'm sorry.
Trustee Valen, you said that's at the top of the queue?
Remind me, trustee, remind us what we're talking about, seventy-five, fifty, page four.
Page four of six, Trustee Warner had identified policy thirty-four, twenty-one that doesn't exist yet. And Trustee Valen said it's at the top of the queue.
Yes.
Is there a reason we can't fast-track it?
No.
To that, it will align with the adoption of this one, so that, you know, reference something that doesn't exist?
Yes, Trustee Valen. So, if I had given my committee report, I would have said that that's among the five that are being currently actively worked on by administration, and will be in our next round of, uh, presentations to the board. So, it's literally at the top of the queue.
So.
That is actively being reviewed by admin.
I guess my, my one concern is I don't want the reference to a policy that doesn't exist yet. So, could we hold on this one then until that one comes out? Or can we do them together?
May I recommend that we continue the process of reviewing and presenting it to the public, and we can hold off on the approval of it until then?
Yes.
That will work.
Yes.
We'll just delay the, the one until the other one catches up with it.
Yeah. But before you move on to other policies, I do have comments on this one.
Go ahead.
I have, no, I have other comments on this policy if Trustee Pineda is done and before you move to the next policy.
He's done.
Okay.
Trustee Valen.
Okay, so, David covered the one, and when we add that back in, it'll be added up above the prohibition of retaliatory behavior as far as the placement. I'm gonna go back to page four of six. Oh, it's the same page, what am I doing? When we're looking at paragraph two, the superintendent or principal, their designated or the dignity act coordinator will lead or supervise blah, 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 blah. And it references that grouping of people in various palaces through here. And I just wanna know if, do we need to tighten up any language somewhere to make sure we know who has responsibility and that actions don't fall through the cracks?
So, um, I think that's an excellent question.
I think it's something we need to think about, but we can't decide tonight.
Yeah, but I think that's an excellent question, because, uh, I know that when you make a DAFSA report, it seems like the dignity act coordinator seems to take the lead on communications, but isn't that, like you said, the language can be tightened up to say, maybe there is a primary person, and that person isn't available, then the principal or another designated, you know? But how is the language gonna be? That's a great question.
Mm-hmm. And then another note, um, just in the cross-reference section, we need to cross-reference policy seven-five, five, four, which of course I didn't write down what it is, but that's another one that needs to be cross-referenced here.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, seven-five, five, four, do you have any questions on that or comments, Trustee Warner?
Sure.
I'm sorry, were you done, Trustee Valen? Okay.
So, uh, seven-five, five, four, if you go to the very end of the policy four, four, it adds policy fifty-six, thirty-three, gender neutral single occupancy bathroom.
Yes.
And fifty-six, thirty-three is currently pest management and pesticide use.
Well, that's not good.
So, you're gonna have to bump a number if you use that, or you're gonna probably assign it a different number. Yes, you have something that's gonna fix that.
That's already also well in hand and identified, and when it's added to the policy manual, we'll have a different policy number. So, that's already been identified as something that we'll need to change, but thank you, we did not notice.
But it won't be fifty-six, thirty-three, because it can't be.
Cross-referenced here, so.
Right. So, you're gonna change the number.
What did you say, David?
You have to change the number, because there's an existing policy occupying that number.
Right.
All right. Change the number when new policy added.
Okay, Trustee Valen, did you have a comment on the seventy-five? Five, four, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to committee reports, so then. Okay, well, oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to talk about the, I'm sorry. Seven, did you have five, six, eight, one, any comments?
I did not have any comments on five, six, eight, one, school safety plans. I do have comments on seven-five, three, zero, child abuse and maltreatment.
Okay.
Let's see. So, page two, page, sorry, I have to look at my notes. Page two and page four and five refer to... So, on page two, page four and five, it refers to the various positions that are required to report. And I am intuiting that it's highly specific, because it has to do with certifications and legal requirements. But I'm just wondering, you know, there are many other staff members involved in our schoolchildren's lives. Do, just the, and I guess this would also be a question for legal. Do, do we want to encourage other staff to report when they hear of issues, even though they're not legally mandated? Do we want to include that in our policy? I'm thinking specifically of, for example, our security personnel isn't really covered by, by the item, by the positions listed here.
Because legally, everyone's a mandated reporter. But the school districts usually like you to go up the chain of, right, and notify people, or do they encourage a security staff person to call?
Dr. Iverson, I guess, just your policy, what do you want?
So, right now, if, if it was to happen, it's a big, large, what, they would probably be put up to the principal, but.
Legally.
Legally, yes, I hear your point, legally, everyone's a mandate. But I, I would, I don't think security. I think they have reported it up to either the principal or the counselor and also, um, and that's been working, but if you want to, um, doesn't think that'd be more specific, you can do that.
So, I'm thinking, so, for what you're saying, it sounds like here on page two, a person's required to report per their position. It sounds like that maybe could stay as is, but later on, on page four, blah, page four, page five, when we're looking at, you know, who needs to complete a written or oral report, maybe that could be more generalized to all school staff, instead of naming certain positions. Of course, now I can't find the paragraph, because I didn't have this printed.
Action.
That was my next point, who's true strength. Okay, well, that was my other point, on page seven, in the training section, we probably need to also include. So, we need to, so, just to reget, on page seven, or here, it's page six of seven, where it says, um, training, who gets trained? We need to probably make that more general language to include more staff. And we're talking about who does written and oral reports, again, make it more general as to which staff can do that. Let me just see if I have other notes. Excuse me, okay. Okay, now, that was the, that was the bulk of it?
That was it for seventy-five, thirty? Okay, and you didn't have anything on seventy-one, thirty-one, Trustee Valen? Any other trustees have questions, concerns, comments with the policies set forth? So, you have thirty days, and we're gonna deal with it again in July? Yes.
So, at the regular meeting on June twentieth, we will present it to the public. And then we will take action, yes, in July.
Not taking action, but thank you, Trustee. Okay, any committee reports? C one. Trustee, Trustee Pineda.
Okay. Um, so, this is the report for the Safety and Technology Committee. This is the last committee meeting of this school year. Uh, it happened on Thursday, May eleventh, five-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM at the Willensboro High School Innovation Lab. Meeting was called to order at five-forty PM, and attendance were myself, Trustee Valen, Trustee Warner, uh, Ms. Raymond, and Ms. Drew Lees. Uh, we reviewed the committee charges one more time, just as a refresher. We reviewed and adopted the previous meeting minutes. We then, uh, had a conversation on the topics around safety. Uh, the first update was the security grants update. Um, Ms. Raymond was working with, uh, Steve Clark on submitting the grant applications to fund safety and security projects to upgrade our security envelope in the amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars. Again, that's a submission for a grant, that doesn't mean we have anything committed yet. Where was also some work on a stop grant to fund communications and repeaters, radios, and panic buttons. That's also being worked on as of that point in time. Uh, Ms. Raymond gave us an update that there was a school safety symposium. Mr. Lees, Mr. Santos, and Ms. Raymond were gonna be attending that event at Westchester Community College, and it was focused on several hours dedicated to technology and security in our school and post-incident debriefing methods. Uh, the hope was that that would inform future district and school safety plans. The GPD was also hosting a safety event that, uh, would be attended as well. There was a district safety committee update. At that point in time, the committee was planning to, uh, was meaning to update the plan changes that were gonna be made. And there was gonna be one more meeting to review the changes to finalize and move forward with the process to the Board of Education agenda, public comment period, and publishing it on the district website. We had an update on vape detectors. The detectors at that point in time had been purchased, wiring was in progress, and the dedicated network switch, which is used for all these devices to communicate, had been ordered, but was not expected to be delivered until sometime this summer. Uh, Mr. Lees was looking into if there was an option to use a different, um, network device that he may have on ha, on hand already, um, or that he was ordering for other infrastructure upgrades in the interim. We also had an update on the stop on cameras, the law had been passed. If, if everybody need a refresher, these are the cameras that would be activated on school buses when the stop arm, uh, was opened on the school bus. Um, we couldn't do anything in the past, because there was no law allowing that. At, as of this meeting, the law had been passed, um, and the district was working with the representative for the cooperative agreement, so we could be, uh, participating in the first round of installations um, of that county initiative. We then had an update on the technology area. Um, the update was thirty-five interactive displays have been purchased and arrived on that day, May eleventh, and were going to be installed across all buildings and learning spaces. Um, the one-to-one device program updates for the end of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year and the start of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four school year was that we were receiving an additional hundred and thirty-five Chromebooks to support the fleet during the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three school year, and the remaining Christopher funds would be used to purchase the first-year cycle Chromebooks for the twenty-three to twenty-four school year. There will be a collection of the Chromebooks beginning in June, as of the date of this meeting, this was May eleventh again. Um, the collection, the communications about that would go out in the first week of June to schools and families. Devices will be collected in each of the buildings. And just as a recap, the purpose behind that is, uh, essentially, the technology department is collecting all of the old devices, um, so that they can inventory them, refresh them, renew them, and if possible, redeploy them next year or replace them with other devices for the next school year. So, that's the context behind that. Uh, we had an update on the website, including the Civic Plus and the BOE portion of it, um, and what the plans were. We also had a, uh, conversation around the creation of a website development committee, and the first charge of that committee would be to work on moving the BOE website to that new platform. There was talk of a summer retreat specifically for the technology department. In July, there will be a technology department retreat, where safety and technology committee members will be invited for a session within the retreat, and it's just to give the safety and technology committee members uh, a little bit of input directly and also hear the process, going through the plans for the next school year. We had an update on the tech this out, um, events that happened in the, in the district. Highview Elementary students had engaged in the STEAM activity to construct the bridge using various materials. Students learned about materials, shapes, as well as design methods, styles, and techniques. They applied these concepts using the design process to conduct experiments on how to build the strongest bridge. Students then tested their designs by loading them up to test the structure's capacity to support a load. Pretty interesting. Additional connections were made related to how weather and other environmental factors can impact bridges and their ability to withstand various forces. Last, in alignment with the district's IB philosophy, students constructed meaning and a globe, constructed meaning and a global context by identifying the importance bridges serve in connecting people, places, and things. Uh, Willens students activated their artistic and creative abilities to make connections to current world events and issues through technology. Student voice and point of view on important issue, important issues, such as the economy and current rate of inflation, the state of healthcare in our country, and several other important issues came to life as they utilized graphic art software to create storyboards that illustrated their personal connections and understanding of the issues. A motion was made to go into closed session, and, uh, open session closed at six forty-five. Um, we then talked about various topics in closed session that were closed session topics. Closed session ended at seven forty-eight PM, and we adjourned the meeting at seven forty-eight PM. And that's the end of my committee report.
Thank you, Trustee Pineda, any questions, comments?
Uh, did you want to, um, you talked about collecting all of the, all the laptops at the end of the year. Did you want, in, in the case of somebody who needs a laptop for summer reading, was there a provision for that?
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, Trustee Warner, I forgot about that. So, cognizant of the fact that there may be some students in the district that may need, um, to use a lap, a Chromebook uh, during the summer for either summer reading or any kind of research issues or anything like that, uh, there was a provision being worked on by the technology department to provide a, essentially, a loaner uh, that, that students could sign out. Um, I believe the thought process was to, um, send an email. Dr. Macaluso, would you happen to know what the email address would be for that? Would it just be the general?
I don't have that handy, but I can find it for you.
Okay, so, yeah, maybe we could just raise that at the next meeting, as a reminder, what they can, who they can contact. Thank you.
So, oh, Trustee Washington? Oh, comment, question, concern? You have your report, okay. Are there any more comments, questions, concerns? I just want a clarity about that. So, this year, all the kids are giving back their Chromebooks?
Yes.
Okay, so I think parents should probably know that, so.
Yeah, that, that's why I said in there, there's a bullet point, that says that a communication's going out the first week of June?
Well, it's.
This is the first.
This is the first week of June.
So, I don't know, I, they didn't tell me the date.
You didn't know about that. So, Dr. Macaluso, I guess, is the first stop that needs to be out. Okay, thank you. Trustee Washington, you have a report?
Yes, um, the Education and Wellness Committee met on May twenty-second in the Innovation Lab, and Dr. Macaluso and his team did a wonderful presentation on the celebrations of our education department instruction. We implemented a new math program. We introduced math interventions, which is do math. Implemented uniform math instruction in the high school, which is e-math. And this. And district-wide, district-wide SEL committee, and we had a lot of parent universities. And there's so much more, and you can also see it on YouTube because he had a wonderful presentation. So you can literally see everything that was happening in the district. Dr. Foye came, and he discussed the college acceptances and spoke in reference to the guidance department. Computer-based tests are a New York State initiative. Will be coming, of course, to Greenberg, just like every other school district, so they're preparing themselves for that. There were a lot of vacancies coming up, but they are prepared, and they will be filling the vacancies through, out now. Many of the principals are interviewing, and Dr. Macaluso interviewing, and they are hoping for every position to be filled for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. We also talked about the summer curriculum writers that will be doing a lot of work around IB. There's a summer reading initiative programs. Every child will have a book, and they're looking into the digital, digital platforms so that children can access them also. He also talked about the E O Y, which is the end-of-year testing, and the data will be coming, forthcoming to the board, and somehow, some way, will be getting to our community, but the testing is over now. Pre-K is having a new curriculum, which is called Stepping Stone, and they're really excited because this will basically speak in reference to every subject area and SEL. Professional development for all teachers when it comes to IB. They want to make sure all teachers are professionally developed in every single school, PYP, DYP, and something else P. But they all will be professionally developed this year, um, as Dr. Macaluso will, um, be heading that and spearheading that this year with his team. There's so much more information, but I'm not going to sit here for two hours and tell you. So please, go on YouTube, take your time to rewind, fast forward, stop, take notes, because it was such a well-done presentation about who we are instructionally in Greenberg Central School District. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Washington. So any questions, comments, concerns about the Education and Wellness Committee meeting? I just, yes, trustee Warner?
Wonderful. So, uh, when, can we expect those end-of-year, uh, numbers?
That would be addressed to Dr. Macaluso?
So end-of-year testing is wrapping up, and then we'll need to kind of confirm, validate, make sure everything's on. And so, you know, I can go ahead and look at that and provide it either at the beginning of next year or if we, um, if Dr. Iverson would like, I can provide it in a packet at some point, in whatever form the board would like or Dr. Iverson would like, I can give that for you.
Yeah. Packet would be great.
And even, um, maybe during our retreat? Uh-oh, it's getting loud again.
I think it's because we both turnovers off at the same time.
So maybe even at the retreat, we can have a presentation of the data, the end-of-year data to the board, and then, however, to the community. Suggestion?
So I wanted to know, um, I'm sorry if this is asked already because I was having a psych conversation, but I wanted to know when the ELA and math scores will be done. I was able, was that the question? Oh, sorry. At some point.
I will send the letter of remembrance.
So loud. I was able to see I read these scores, but I wasn't, you know. All right. Thank you. I won't be repetitive.
So, so typically, the state testing scores are not usually available until the end of August, typically. Um, and then there is an embargo period even by which, um, we are not even allowed to share that with board members, and that's just the state regulation. It's just things that the superintendent can use for her planning purposes for the next upcoming school year, but you can anticipate that the state may release them around August. It's usually their typical pattern.
Okay. Um, so any more questions, comments, concerns? No? That was the last one of the year, right?
Yes, it is over. Thank you very much. Oh, wait, I did want to say, um, I wanted to say thank you, trustee Pineda, for all of your hard work and dedication that I think might be your last report, but I'm not really sure. But just congratulations on your new endeavors, and thank you for what you have done for Greenberg.
Um, trustee, I feel like I saw your hand raised for committee report, but I don't want to call on you if you're not ready. And trustee Valen wants to go first? You defer? Okay.
Because I'll be short. First, I'm going to announce that the next, uh, meeting of the Audit Committee will be Monday, June twelfth at one PM in the Freelo Center at Woodlands Middle High School. We will, we will be going over the corrective action plans that Ms. Raymond has devised with her team for the internal audit and, uh, the intensive review. Also, I do have a Governance and Policy Committee report. I will read through it extremely quickly. And, let's see. Okay, so we saw that our items were ready for review today. There are policies which admin are currently looking at, plus the code of conduct. Those policies are on procurement, the Uniform Grant Guidance for Federal Awards, which is fifty-four thirteen, but we have to have, um, a new number. Sixty-four eleven, the use of email in the school district. Thirty-four twenty-one, Title IX and sex discrimination. Five-six-six-one, wellness, which is also being worked on with the Nutrition Committee, and sixty-one twenty-one, sexual harassment in the workplace. The Governance and Policy Committee is suggesting getting, going to check with legal changes for the policy on committees, twenty-two-ten. Legal is also looking at sixty-one fifty, alcohol, tobacco, ju- drugs, and other substances. Then other items have been added to the queue. It's a very long queue, so I'm not going to read all of those. Um, we discussed, um, consulting legal on a policy regarding staff relationships. We discussed the ex officio student member policy and, uh, reaching out and coordinating with the CEC Committee to, um, meet up with student government in the fall. We reviewed for approval by the Board of Education in June or July, changes to the Governance Handbook, which I will send separately for review beforehand. We discussed the need to review board norms holistically and added that as a possible retreat topic. We discussed adding items surrounding the annual meeting to the Board Tasklist or Handbook. We discussed other ideas for a fall retreat and hopefully can get a September weekend where we're all magically available. Um, some of those ideas include restorative practices, implicit bias training, reviewing the board norms, which I mentioned, and discussing liaisons and, um, how we can get to know our schools a little bit better. In new business, we discussed the need to better publicize our events. We discussed the need to revise the sample letter for attendance, which is included in Policy seventy-one-ten. And our next meeting is Tuesday, June thirteenth at four PM in the Innovation Lab at Woodlands Middle High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Valen, any questions, comments, concerns on the report? Hearing none. Any other reports? Just trustee Warner?
The Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents sponsored the Carol F. Johnson Scholastic Achievement Dinner at the Westchester Marriott and Terry Town on May twenty-fourth. Approximately seventy-five districts from Dutchess, Putnam, Rockland, and Westchester Counties participated. Scholarship awards were distributed based on student essays. Our valedictorian, Nicholas Valen, and soliditorian, Giselle Dominguez, were invited to attend, but it was prom night. Dr. Iverson, trustee Long, and myself attended. The superintendent collected our students' certificates and took them to the prom. The PTA Council met at the Greenberg Public Library last Saturday, June third, at nine-thirty AM. About fourteen people attended, including Board President Tracy Maris, trustee Julie Long, and myself. Uh, award pins were presented to the PTA leaders for past service. I think Julie has one if you want to model it. Acting PTA Council President Edith Horn presented a set of tools to be used for the school PTA units and the PTA Council to set SMART goals. PTA unit leaders presented on recent events they'd helped organize. There was an extensive discussion of the goal-setting process and of the relationship between building PTA units and the PTA, uh, the, the building PTA units and the PTA Council. Three PTA leaders volunteered as judges for the Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award. Uh, Jamal Thomas, uh, could you tell us what our status is on our judges?
We have seven judges for the award. Um, they will be connecting over the coming days so that at the next meeting, uh, we are able to announce the winner of the Nettie Jackson Award.
Beautiful. I was provided with a copy of last year's Westchester Examiner that featured high school graduates from most local school districts, except for Woodlands. Uh, there's a request from the PTA that we make a concerted attempt to have our information published along with the other districts in this year's edition. That's the Westchester Examiner. So it's, it has a celebration of all the graduates, uh, and that's pretty much what the issue is dedicated to. So if we can get our, our students in there, that would be good. Uh, the PTA Council may wish to sponsor a district-wide back-to-school event for next year. Unit leaders were asked to provide ideas for the event, but not at the meeting. They didn't do it at the meeting. They're, they're going to come back with something. We ate lunch, and then the PTA Council went into executive session and chose a nominating committee for next year's PTA Council election. Community members, nominating committee members include Pam Davis, Stephanie Loria, uh, Julia Long, Martina Omeley, and Gabriela Barahona. Yvette Swavey Lipton was the PTA Council President earlier in the school year. She resigned to deal with family health care issues. Her longtime husband, Norman Lipton, passed away on five-twenty-six, and a funeral was held at Hitchcock Presbyterian Church last Sunday, June fourth. Uh, Board President Tracy Maris and I attended. Uh, we, we wish her well and, uh, and, uh, you know, condolences. Uh, the next meeting of the Finance and Facilities Committee is June fifteenth at six-thirty PM at Woodlands Innovation Lab or via Zoom link. A link will be posted on the online district calendar. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Warner. Um, trustee Thomas, can, uh, can you just encourage the group when they do select, or Doc, or Dr. Iverson, because you're in the group along with trustee Washington, when you do come up with the winner or winners, you have to get that to Christine, like ASAP, because she has to order the, um, award to give to the winner or winners, and it may take several days. Okay. That was all. Any other questions, comments, concerns about the report? Hearing none. Let's keep going. Any other reports? No? Board President's report is.
I was just going to say that the Community Engagement and Communications, uh, Committee are going to be meeting on Saturday at eleven AM. Um, I will have an email going out to the distribution list, um, on where that meeting's going to be. It'll certainly be in, in, on Zoom, but, uh, it's possible that we'll be meeting in person, so I'll confirm that by, uh, by, uh, tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you, trustee. What was the date again?
Saturday.
The sixth-ten. June tenth. You know what ti- you don't know what time? Eleven AM.
Eleven AM.
Okay. I'll talk to you later. And any other questions, comments, concerns? No? Dr., uh, Board President's report's table. Dr. Iverson, superintendent's report?
Mine is, uh, everything I had on has been mentioned, other than I just too, oh, sorry. I too just wanted to reiterate and congratulate the high school seniors who last night were recognized and recipients of scholarships from the Woodlands High School Scholarship Fund. Um, that community organization raised over thirty-five thou- thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, through their efforts. Uh, very commendable, and they were able to give away and award seventeen student scholarships, uh, to amounts up to two thousand dollars to help with college expenses. So, uh, what a memorable and, and just a nice event, and I want to congratulate all high school seniors again, who were recognized last night for your accomplishments, uh, uh, and for receiving your awards.
Thank you, Dr. Iverson. That's the report?
That's it. Everything else was mentioned by someone else.
I did want to a- ask you, I'm assuming, I should ask you for the, um, cellphone policies are coming up for next year. I just want to get some communication out there. Um, so currently, there's been a change. The middle high school has no cellphones during school day, I guess. Um, and down, meaning barely, high view, no cellphones, believe it or not, got to say it, high view, no cellphones. Um, what is the plan for next year for the high school as well with the cellphones?
So you're right, at, um, the middle school right now, they are not to bring them out of their backpacks. They're to be put in their backpacks, and, and they are to remain there for the duration of the day, and that's went home to parents. I will say that, um, we have not had a significant, um, uh, problem with that. It seems to be working. As I talked to Ms. Enriquez, um, it's working very well. The students have been very compliant. Uh, occasionally, when we're walking the building, uh, she's in classes as well as Mr. Smith in just reminding them, and, uh, they have been compliant. So we are now at the point of the planning for next year. Uh, we're looking to look, uh, and will include this in our code of conduct, including stricter language around the cellphone use. Uh, we have not formulated that, uh, formally yet. I am meeting with administrators tomorrow. I, I will get back to you and be able to tell you more. Uh, but we will be ex- expanding that, uh, more to, um, the upper grades. But more specifically, uh, haven't, we really just have not ironed it out yet, so, um, I don't have enough to tell you tonight.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. I just, I'm, whatever you do have it, early communication. Some people know. Okay.
So I have a quick concern.
Uh-huh.
Um, we know that we're getting a lot of the smog and fog from the wildfires in Quebec. Is there any type of, um, safety measures we're taking here in the Greenberg Central School District around students outside running, asthmatic students, um, in reference to that? So it's something to think about because it was pretty thick today, and I don't know how it's going to be tomorrow. But we have students outside, and, and it could be a health issue in all of our schools? I mean, something that, you know.
I will mention it tomorrow. I'll meet with administrators. Okay, I. Right, I.
Yeah, just you could see maybe if someone can find out how long it's going to actually kind of over, you know, be over us for. I don't know if it's going to, you know, subside soon, but it was pretty thick today.
Uh, thanks for bringing that to my attention. You know, I just had not even noticed that and hadn't gotten any.
Yeah, it was on the news. It's been on the news and.
There's an air quality alert in effect until midnight, Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, yeah, so we should just.
For now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Personnel Report.
Good evening, everyone. So very quick announcements. I wanted to remind the public that the Summer Reading website has now launched. We will be distributing books to our students this Friday, and summer reading events at each school begin on Monday, the twelfth. The Summer of Fun Event is also going to take place next week, Tuesday on the thirteenth. We have now closed the RSVP for that, so we extended it by a couple more days. We now have two-hundred-ninety-three students pre-registered for that event and two-hundred-twenty-four parents, so we expect that that will be a great event. So, um, if more people join, just know that since we have cut off the RSVP, there'll be a chance that those of you who have not RSVP'd may not be able to, um, have all the takeaways from that, but we did try to plan accordingly. So thank you to all of the parents and students who registered for that, and thank you to the literacy and math coach who helped spearhead that event. We did have two full days of professional development focused on restorative practices in schools last week on May thirty-first and July, I'm sorry, June first. So, um, that was actually very deep learning for us. I want to thank all of those who participated in that for their openness to participation, and we are looking at next year being our pilot year with that and focusing on relationships to build community as a way of progressing toward the restorative circles in our schools. And finally, um, final exams begin on the thirteenth for Woodlands Middle School, and know that the following week and the week after that will be Regents Exams, and those schedules are posted on the district website, as well as Mr. Smith has distributed that information.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Macaluso. I forgot to RSVP myself, so hopefully, I don't know if maybe the building leaders can put out like another, um, because I got it from both building leaders, I believe.
Correct.
They can put out another reminder, maybe? Uh, because I, I forgot myself, so.
So unfortunately, we did have to close out the RSVP. That doesn't mean that we will not accept more people. It just means that for planning purposes, we have a lot of, um, make and takes that the students will be able to participate in and take things away with them, and so unfortunately.
But then you said it was extended, you're saying.
It was extended. It, it was actually closed last Friday, and we extended it two more days.
Oh.
Monday and Tuesday. So we had closed it last, it was supposed to be closed last Friday, and we resent it out, and we added two more days. So we did have to close that out because we did put in, um, another order for materials because we want to make sure that as many students as possible can take those.
I can attend?
You can attend. I'm just saying that there's a chance that the takeaways might, you know, we did overorder. Let's hope that our excess is still within that buffer, um, but we did want to be fiscally responsible, so, um, but that's a great turnout, you know, two-hundred-ninety-three students and two-hundred-twenty-four parents. Um, you know, we expect that to be a nice turnout, so.
Is that under, um, the curriculum tab? I'm trying to find it. I totally forgot to RSVP. I, I'm sure there's parents that.
I did, I did not place the flyer on the curriculum website, um, because, uh, we had, uh, definitely received some, some guidance that when the principals and teachers send it out, it's usually mo- more received than if, uh,
Yeah, definitely.
I asked parents to go to the Curriculum Instruction website, so they had sent it out through the mass notification system and or backpacks. So we did see a spike in. did see a spike in preregistration, which is a great thing, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
We, we hope everyone will get, will be able to take something away from that. So it's our first time with this, and like I said, we expect it to be a nice community event and nice turnout, so someone should walk away with something, at least one thing.
Okay. Next, yes, Trustee Valen?
Sorry, I'm thrilled with the numbers that you've gotten for that event. Of course, I'm wondering, there would be, I was on campus last week, and L F J had their Sports Day over at the stadium. Of course, all those parents haven't really been on campus before, so I was hoping redirect traffic because I was on my way out of a different thing. But with those great numbers, I'm assuming we're going to have security or somebody help people know where to park, because there's like at least three parking lots, and we're going to help those logistics so people can find their way for the event. And I'll just also put in a plug, anyone can go to the governance meeting right beforehand. But Dr. McAluso, I, I did have a question, and that's just to pursue, I know we just recently have begun our hiring for the summer school. Has information gone out to the families who are eligible to attend summer school, and do we have any idea on, on who's been able to commit to attending for the two programs that we have?
We do have, notifications did go out, and we do have the enrollment. In fact, Ms. Raymond and I have been working on that collaboratively to make sure we have the bus routes in place. I don't have the exact enrollment on, on my fingertips, but we are close to enrollment in most of the grades, so we, we try to cap those classes at 15 for the summer, especially because we want to have that as an opportunity for students to get some nice small group instruction. And when I looked at the numbers, when Ms. Raymond and I planned the transportation, I think like a week and a half ago or two weeks ago, it was close to capacity in almost all grades, except for the middle school, of course. But in middle school, remember, we actually opened up two sections per grade level this year, which was different from last year. So our enrollment is a little lower, but we now have two sections of that, each, for seventh and eighth.
Thank you for that. That's also good news. And the last question I had is just, I had a conversation over the weekend with a couple of families who told me that their rising juniors had attended the Bosse's Open House in March, and that they'd kind of heard about it through word of mouth and social media, and I just would like to, to suggest that the word gets passed along, that maybe that needs to be put into our programming for guidance to share that information out with our students in February or March. Again, the Bosse's Open House was this past March 23rd, and they said it was fantastic and got some good ideas, and I know the, at least one student came back and spoke to guidance, and, and they were helpful with helping him enroll in, in the program he was interested in. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Valen. Any other questions or concerns, comments? Hearing none, let's move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Business report.
Thank you. The April 2023 Treasurer's Report began the month with $47,829,377. We deposited $3,030,220 and dispersed $6,138,397, giving us an ending balance of $44,721,201. The district-wide safety plan is completed, and I had included it in your Friday update. I will put that tomorrow on our website for 30 days, and then ask that we bring it back at the July meeting for a public hearing and adoption then by the board so that it can then be uploaded timely next school year to the State Education Department. As I had said in the presentation about the facilities projects, R.J. Bailey's ventilation has started, and they are making some good progress there. They did work over the Memorial Day holiday while school was not in session and was able to do a lot of work with staff or students there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any questions, comments? Concerns about Ms. Raymond's report? No? Hearing none, we're going to move on to work session approvals. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve instructional personnel item F 12 presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
Was there an amendment to that?
There was not.
I believe, check with Chrissy.
So there will need to be just clarification that items F 1 through 11 are being tabled.
I believe there's a name that's been removed.
Thank you.
So yes, as amended.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve item F 12 as amended.
As amended.
Second.
Great. It's been properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. E 2, personnel, non-instructional items, can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, any discussion? Just want to check something. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item E 3, board action items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item E 4, pupil personnel services items.
I move that we approve the pupil personnel services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now we're going to move forward to item J 1, excuse me, item J, which is review agenda items for next meeting. So trustees, there are 65 agenda items. As usual and traditionally, I would go through each one, however, it's very late, and there's 65 items. Does anyone have an issue with me not going through each one? Okay, great. I will identify, though, that item J 51 is going to have to be separately voted upon, as I will be abstaining from that contract. Other than that, yes, Trustee Valen?
I do have two questions on items. So if we look at item J 10, it's not a change for this item per se, it's the appointment of C S E, C P S E members for the summer, but I'd just like to put in a plug that I would like, I would like it if the district could continue or improve our recruitment of the parent members of the C S E and C P S E committees. I know there's one parent who regularly is appointed, but I think we need to improve our recruitment and involvement of younger parents so that we have a bank of help.
Parents of younger children.
Yes, sorry, I stated that incorrectly.
Okay.
Yes.
What was the second issue?
Second issue, J 31, let me flip to it, for the creation of the tax s- sociary fund. Just a, just a question, Ms. Raymond. I know in some years, we close out a tax year and put those monies into a different, into, you know, into the new fund, but I haven't seen a closeout of a tax year recently. It might be that I couldn't find it, but can you, is, are we waiting for the audit from New York State to complete before we do that?
Correct, and I'm asking you to pass, this resolution has to be done by June 30th. We may or may not put money in there depending on the audit, but I wanted to make sure that this was in place in case we needed to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Valen, that's all. Okay. We're going to move on then to the next agenda item, which is closing items new business. The only new business items I would mention is that the calendar planning is underway for next year. If any parents or community members have, you know, any concerns or any inquiries, now is the time to send communications to your administration, the building administration, the PTA, because PTAs are also involved in the calendar planning, the superintendent or, or anyone, if you have any questions or concerns about next year's calendar. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? No? Item K 2, adjournment, can I get a motion?
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. It's 11:35 PM. Good night.
Good night.